You know, we gave them. Well, my lot of.
It's something for.
We need donations for fireworks.
Yeah, it's not rice, have double, we need your help.
Well, we have the, I mean, they can always apply for an application to be considered. I mean, I don't.
We're basing out.
Here we're ready to go.
Let's go.
They have lessons. Blood of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh. Let the roll call show that all present, we do have a core. And have approval of the agenda.
Move we approved the agenda, but I would like to amend it to add fireworks and open container under new business. Uh, as we had in.
Two, two separate items fireworks.
Well, they're for the fourth of July. So I don't know.
I think two separate items. Yeah, load up each one separately.
Second, so, so it's been moved and second moved by Councilman Steller, second by Councilman Zent, that we add two items to the agenda. Uh, under new business, the first one being. Uh, fireworks on the Fourth of July. And the second one will be an alcohol open container.
On the Fourth of July.
On the Fourth of July. Any further? Amendments, none, none being. Uh. And then moved and second. Uh, that we had the amendment, all in. Faber say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, motion passed, all in affirmative. Communication from citizens.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of town council, I'm Jeff Yi with James Gores and Associates. We are currently working on your level two. Uh, WWDC project, which is focusing mostly on the line breaking between well six and the tank. Um. I, there has been some concerns because there's a little bit of overlap between our scope of work and the scope of work of HDR, who is working on the, uh, well houses. We're coordinating with them, we're making sure that, uh. There's, we're not doing anything that the town's paying HDR to do, and they're not going to do anything that the state is paying James course to do. So we've, we've been talking with them back and forth a lot. Uh, currently, we are. Um, trying to, um, set up transducers to measure the pressures that's in that line. Um, that'll help us determine the, the velocity of the pressure wave. And, and get an idea on exactly what's happening to cause those pipes to break. Also, we're working on, uh, pulling the pump on well six so that we can run a camera down there and find out exactly where the gas is coming in. Uh, during that time, we have to cycle through the water in the well and, and make sure it's all fresh and we have fresh gases coming in. At that time, we're going to take, uh, uh, water samples to check the quality of water and hopefully identify exactly what type of gas is coming in. Um, so that's where we stand right now. Does anyone have any questions or concerns?
If, uh. You said in it, eh, any. You're, you're trying to turn for the entrainment of the gas is coming in.
Yes, we're, so there, the well has seven screen sections.
Okay.
And we're, uh, talking with different engineers and drillers throughout the area. They, they're pretty positive that we're going to go down there with a camera and you'll just see. You know, three or four feet of one screen section that has gas coming in. And if we can plug that off. Then that's, that's the best and easiest solution to this whole thing. Is if you know exactly where the gas is coming in and it's reasonable to cap that off, we can.
Uh, plug it off, would you go in there with a set of packers and?
So we would probably start with a set of packers and then we would run in with a hanger.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Appreciate, appreciate, appreciate the update.
No problem. Were, were there any other questions? Okay. Yeah, I just saw that look on your face like.
You asked my question.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate the update.
Yep, you're welcome.
Uh, consent agenda. Uh. Do you wanna? Split this up in, in three or? Or approve the minutes and the bills and do cast bars separately or? Let's just prove the agenda.
I move, we approve the minutes of June thirteen. And approve the bills of June fourteenth. Through twenty seven.
Been moved by customers that to prove the minutes of June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three and prove the bills, the June fourteenth to June twenty-seventh to twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Been second by Councilman Stellar. Do we have any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both the same. Motion passed on the affirmative. Uh. Cast bar payment application number two. CK. Pound zero, zero, one, drill, zero, one, three hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars. Want to go into discussion at first or? Or?
Yeah, this would be special.
Okay.
Like a lot of them is just their insurance business.
Yeah, it's seventy-three pages, but the majority of it's the, uh, ins- insurance and bonding and all that.
Go back to this second page. Text stamp of.
Well, how far the? In the scope of their construction, how far are they along? Two thirds?
There it's coming on May. But payment completes for this, put it at forty-nine percent about half, but it looks like construction wise, they're, they're past that ball, but this, this reflects forty-nine percent. Complete their, uh, their sheet rocking is mostly done, they're running electrical right now. Uh. Uh. Get a moment, yeah, gotta drop by, take a, take a look, but it's, it's moving, moving right along, uh.
Same like eighty percent done this, this payment application only goes through the middle of May, so everything they've done since about May eleven through now is not on this.
Mm-hmm. But you can start to get a vision when you go in there to.
Yeah.
I move where you approve. The payment to cash for patients, that's your building system for three hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars.
Well, second.
Been moved by Councilman Zant, second by Councilman Harky that we approve the payment application number two to cast bars for three hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's the same. Motion passed all the affirmative. Uh. Going to a public hearing closer regular meeting of the Shoney Town Council.
We need to do any amendments before the public hearing or after or?
Or when we get into it.
Okay.
Have a motion to adjourn.
Someone. Have a second?
Moving second, we adjourn our regular meeting, this is showing me. Council. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same. All from fitness, we are now on the public hearing part of our.
Need to motion go.
Yeah, we do. Okay, make a motion to go on the public hearing, I move. That. Been moved by Councilman Steller, second by.
Also.
Councilman Harky, we go on, go on to a public hearing. Any further discussion, none being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's the same. Moving past the affirmative, we are now in a public here.
Ordinance. FY twenty twenty-four, as previously read into the record, third reading of the hearing.
Got a motion to approve the budget third reading. For town, she shown, oh. Is there any discussion, she, I'm jump, is there any discussion from the public? About our budget? Anybody online? That might have something. Any discussion from? There, none being from the floor, any discussion? From? Counts, any of the council. We go back in the regular meeting then. Yeah, if there's, if there's no. If there's no questions or comments, it's. There appears to still be nothing online, nobody from the audience. Got a motion to go back into regular session.
Look, we close public hearing and reopen the regular meeting. Is that right?
Yeah.
Second.
Been moved, we go back, we close public hearing, go back into regular session, been moved by Councilman Steller, second by Councilman Zant. Any further discussion? None being all in parents, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same, motion passed on the affirmative.
I move we approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget as previously read with the following amendments. To add the real estate sales under general fund revenue for thirty thousand dollars. Increase the miscellaneous revenue under general fund revenue from fifteen, or from five thousand dollars to twelve thousand dollars. Add Fremont County rec under capital project revenue for seven thousand dollars. Decrease the slip sewer expansion under capital project revenue by ten thousand, two hundred and four dollars. Add employee bonus merit pay under general administration. Under, uh, for twenty thousand dollars. Increase payroll taxes under general administration for one thousand, five hundred, thirty dollars. Increase grass maintenance under parks and rec, one thousand, eight hundred dollars. Add tree maintenance under parks and rec for three thousand dollars and decrease slip sewer expansion under capital project expenditures by thirty thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. As discussed in our workshop. Mouthful. Yeah, it was a long workshop, it was a good workshop.
Well, it's been been moved that we amend the, amend our budget. Yeah, as stated by Councilman Stettler, I don't remember all of those numbers.
If you want to read them, I got them printed.
There we go. Uh, add the rest, re-add real estate sales under general fund revenue of thirty thousand dollars. Uh, increase miscellaneous revenue and general fund revenue from five thousand to twelve thousand. Add Fremont County rec under capital project revenue, seven thousand. Decrease slip sewer expansion under capital project revenue, ten thousand, two, four. Add employee bonus merit pay under general administration, twenty thousand dollars. Increase payroll taxes under general administration of one thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. Increase grass maintenance under parks, recs, eighteen hundred dollars. Add tree maintenance under parks and rec of three thousand dollars. Decrease slip sewer expansion under capital project expenditures. Thirty thousand, six, twenty. Did we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Hart Key, discussion. Wonder, Chris, could you talk about this just a little bit? We need, uh. Further. Uh. Discuss these just a little bit.
I, yeah, I can briefly summarize the workshop.
Yes.
Um. During the workshop, we had some revenue adjustments on, uh, obviously the real estate, but also um, bills that were paid for this, uh, slip funded sewer expansion that were paid this budget year and won't be paid next year, which affected their revenue side as well as expenditure size, since it was, it was a cash match. Which, um, those were the revenue side. When all those were accounted for, that increased the available revenues, uh, that were unexpended by approximately sixty-six thousand dollars, of which uh, some of the changes were additive expenditures. Um, as previously discussed, the uh, employee bonus merit pay was something that had previously brought up um, prior to the budget, but at the time it was not feasible, uh, to have that, uh, added to the budget. So this allowed that to be possible. And then some of the issues with trying to improve the town's appearance with trees, uh, was brought up by Councilman Zen as being a continuation out of one-off, so since there was some funding there, we, uh, discussed increasing those items to continue that process of replacing trees as well as maintaining the trees in town. Um. And that was pretty much. Yeah. Okay.
Any further discussion? Anybody want to add anything else to that? None being. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both the same. Motion passed in the affirmative.
Pardon, none of we had.
Well, technically the motion was to approve the budget with those amendments.
Correct, okay.
I didn't miss that part.
Yeah, that was.
Uh. Apparently, as we, we've we've been blessed by the Fremont County Rodeo Royalty, they, they, uh, this first time, to my knowledge, they, they led the parade, uh, in, uh, Herschel Shoney days, or the tractor walk, and, uh, please young lady introduce yourself and tell us a little bit.
Mr. Mayor and council members, we appreciate you having us here with you tonight. My name is Heidi Shade and I'm the junior queen for the Fremont County Fair and Rodeo. And I'm Charmaine Dewey and I am the queen for the Fremont County Fair and Rodeo. Um, and I would just like to begin by saying that it was truly an honor to be in the parade. Uh, we enjoyed it, it really got our horses ready for what to expect in the parade with all those uh, tractors around. I know that my horse wasn't phased by the Johnny poppers, but the lawnmower for some reason really got him, so it was just great being able to experience, uh, what might be in parades and just get our horses used to it. And, uh, we would also just like to say that as long as our dates align with yours, if there's ever an event going on in Shoshone, we would love to come support you guys. We truly feel that Shoshone is kind of just a town that is forgotten about in Fremont County and it's, uh, kind of sad because it needs to be a part of it and it needs to be supported, uh, just like all the other towns. So thank you for letting us come to the parade. It was really fun.
No, it was great and we sure appreciate you reaching out and volunteering, they're coming, coming, doing this. I mean, that's, uh, and that's, uh, it's a lot. And like I, like I said, it's, uh, it's, uh, also you have Shoshone connections too, that doesn't hurt.
Yeah.
Recent grad, you know, she's showing me high.
Yeah, so.
And your, and your father was too.
Yes, yeah. Um, and then did you want us to talk about how we kind of got into the?
Yeah, we'd love to hear that. We surely would.
Yeah, so, um, I was part of, I did rodeo when I was little, uh, but then I got into a horse accident, so that kind of stopped me from being in it, but I always knew that I wanted to get back into it. So this was just kind of the gateway for me to get back into it, so.
And when I was a little girl, I always loved rodeo and I just wanted to go to every rodeo there was. And when I saw a rodeo queen, I just knew that I wanted to be her. She was such an inspiration to me and I wanted to be an, uh, inspiration to other little girls. So we had this huge competition that we had to go through, but we both made it.
Yeah.
Well, well, congratulations on both of your success on, and, and getting the position you, you are, and it, we're really honored here to, to have you here at our council meeting and into our parade and, and hopefully, uh, you can get over here. We'll have another event that where everything will work out and sure appreciate you, young ladies, and thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you.
You bet, thanks.
Girl that's burning up the highway. Uh, activities.
Mm-hmm.
Well, or their parents or what have you. Cause, uh, kind of friends, friends with one of their family, well, both of them really, but I've been seeing it on Facebook, there you guys were in Jackson and just everywhere, all the time. There are only some are doing something. I think it's great.
Yes, it is. Again, thanks a lot. Uh, business license, Shoshone Marketplace.
Thank you, guys.
You guys have, drive safely.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Kathy Gordon, starting the Shoshone Marketplace. We're trying to bring in vendors that can bring in their goods, things they make, things they bake, things they crochet or just about anything to the public. And that's what we'd like to do. We have permission from the store to set up across the street. They've given me permission.
All right, any questions for Kathy from the council?
Don't we already have a farmer's market that's doing this?
I cannot tell you what the other farmer's market is doing or what they are doing or not doing. I could not tell you.
Maybe you can answer. So when the farmer's market is or was going, were they utilizing this corner as well, or were they working out of?
They were utilizing both the, uh, during the winter time or inclement weather, they're utilizing the, uh, fire hall. And then other times, uh, over by the, uh, town plaza.
So they're not using this corner currently?
Not to my knowledge.
No, I'm using the corner. Right now.
When would be your time?
Fridays from three to six.
Farmer's market from Fridays from six to seven?
I think it was from five to seven.
But you're not, they're not.
No, we're not the same. We're two different entities.
Only question I have is on the administration side. Um. Is the business license for a farmer's market, whereas it's homegrown locally, uh, produce and, or is there going to be other items that are not?
It's gonna be other items. It's considered a marketplace, a marketplace. You have your home goods, your baked goods, your crafts. So forth, etc.
Do you intend to use this as an umbrella for other?
Yes, for a marketplace for other people. And some of us have licenses already through here.
You're asking about resale? So, so things like, so let's suppose that somebody wanted to sell porcelain dolls, they didn't manufacture porcelain dolls, or they, they imported them or whatever, whatever.
I would see that that would be okay if it wasn't just massive, but we, but I really don't want like that kind of stuff. I want people who, like, we have people who make belts.
So I guess.
Make their own, you know, stuff like that.
Question is, is it, is it all going to be either homemade, handmade, or are they allowed to to sell, to resell, that's, that's part of it?
Sure, the application states homemade.
Yeah, homemade.
Only, I guess I don't think it matters on our.
Yeah. Yeah, like homemade goods, people who do their crafting. Cause there's all kinds of different craftings out there. He, all kinds of different bakes and stuff, and then plus everybody has gardens, brings in goods. I bring in goods from other states to resell.
But it wouldn't, wouldn't be things like, I want to sell hats that I'm, that I ordered on Amazon over.
Well, not necessarily.
So is it? Is that your question about, is that a possibility or?
Cause it was going to operate on the, the general umbrella of one vendor, not.
Yeah.
Individual that are reselling.
The apps, the application.
Well, like I have a gentleman who makes his own T-shirts.
That's why I'm asking, yeah, yeah.
At another market, I wouldn't mind having him come. Cause he designs his own T-shirts and other, for others as well.
The clarity is, so this man makes his T-shirt, so that's a, I make T-shirts.
Mm-hmm.
And the other side is, I bought five thousand T-shirts.
Yeah, not like that.
I want to sell them.
No, not like. No, not like that.
So the goal, so is it prohibited? Does it, I mean, it doesn't.
I guess I was just trying to get the point that if it's going to do someone like that doing a third party reselling under your umbrella, they'd need to get their own business.
Yeah.
That's where.
Okay, now if I come across someone like that, I'll definitely do it that way. Okay, I got you.
Right.
Okay, yeah, I understand that.
In your application, it says homemade.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
Now, when I run across someone that has that ability, I'll corner that and we'll get them a license.
But they could, like Mike said, they're doing their own screen printing and stuff like that.
Yeah, this guy does his own screen printing.
Belt, but he bought the leather, leather somewhere else wasn't homegrown. I mean, same thing, right? Any other questions for Kathy?
Is your scope to do the, do you have a timeframe of this seasonally?
I would say as long as we can do it, when it starts getting too cold, we'll, we will shut down.
Got a memorial to labor.
Yeah, somewhere in there. Depends on how quick it gets cold this year.
Gotta get warm first.
Well, we hope it gets warm.
Can I have a motion to approve the business license for Kathy Gordon? Been moved by Councilwoman Demick. Can I have a second? Second by Councilman Zant. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, say aye. Aye, approved, uh both the same. Motion, move all the affirmative.
Thank you.
Unfinished business, Wind River Visitors Council.
Hello, thank you for having us here. My name's Helen Wilson, Wind River Visitors Council. Um and we have, um we've been here a couple of times now and I I do have the same information for you. Um at this point, um all of the municipalities have passed the Wind River Visitors Council's budget. Um our very final deadline to get this passed is this Friday, so we're, we're coming up on the the final deadline. Um I hope that um everybody's received everything they need at this point. Um we've had several meetings, um we've provided lots of information. Um I did bring for everybody one of our uh twenty twenty-two annual reports. Um as well as a breakdown of spending um for. The Destination Development Program funding, which I um believe was requested and it has been emailed as well, but I brought hard copies for everybody as well. Um I'm happy to hand those out now or I'm happy to answer questions first. I should also mention, we have Owen Sweeney here. He's our incoming president and Helen Gordon and she's our treasurer.
Any questions for Ellen?
Well, I've got a few concerns. Us reading through the bylaws and the joint powers agreement. And I my concerns are that that things haven't necessarily been done properly with the uh the destination grant. Uh my one thing is, is if the Joint Power Board has the authority to. Uh authorize spending of money that's not in the budget, why do we even need to approve the budget?
And that's a great question. Um so for clarification, the Joint Powers Board is the Wind River Visitors Council's Board. Um throughout the state, um there are many lodging tax boards and we are the only one who has the one sentence in our joint powers agreement. Um there's, and this is, this is something that we've looked at and we've discussed. So the organization has been around since nineteen eighty-nine and we have never taken revisions back to the governing bodies. And and you know, looking at it, we've gotten different opinions. One, one of them is, it doesn't say that we need to take revisions back. It has a clear period of this is when the budget needs to be approved, but it also doesn't say that. And so what this has been for is a really big learning experience that the joint powers agreement is old. And it probably needs some clarification. Um I've already started asking the other lodging tax boards to look at theirs. Theirs are old as well. Um this is something, you know, we followed the process that we always have. Um and we, we did get it approved through the Joint Powers Board, the Wind River Visitors Council. And uh and we believe that we have taken all of the right steps, but there are things that aren't clarified in that joint powers agreement. And we have talked to numerous people at this point and um. And I think that that's, that's going to be a solution. It's really clarifying when we rewrite the joint powers agreement, what is, what is required and what isn't. Because the other thing with the destination development money, and this is a an unrelated topic, but it's also related, is that we only had a couple of weeks to apply for it. And these budget approvals, we started them April seventh, I think, and you know, we're the very end of June. And we wouldn't have gotten that money if we would have gone to to all of the governing bodies and and I, you know, we did.
I wasn't specifically referring to receiving the money. I was referring to spending the money.
To spending.
Is if we approve a budget and then you guys change it by three hundred thousand dollars, what is the point of us applying? And I'm reading your bylaws that you, according to your own bylaws, you have to follow the joint power.
Yep.
And then by the joint powers. Section nine, right in the middle, no payment for services rendered material or property purchase shall be made. Except in strict accordance with the budget and operating plan approved by the governing bodies. Which, since it's so plural, that specifically to me states, the board does not have that authority.
And I think with the destination development money, this was a brand new.
Money they spent though.
Yes, and we haven't, we had.
Payment for services requested or materials of property purchase shall be made. Without approval. With the bodies plural.
Uh this, this was a new situation for us. This was money that went through the state in January and we have eighteen months to spend it. And we believe that we did everything right. We consulted the CPA, we talked to the attorney, we talked to everybody we could. We talked to people at the state level and it and it's a tricky one because when I was um putting the budget together and we do have a budget committee. Who um who also reviewed this was like, well, how do we do this? Well, the three hundred thousand dollars we got this fiscal year. So we need to amend the budget to show it this fiscal year. What we did with the cares money in the past, which was the COVID recovery money. Was we put cares and I think it was around two hundred and fifty thousand at the top as a, as a revenue. And then cares at the bottom as an expenditure with the same amount. What we were trying to do here was be transparent about where the money was being spent. Um when we get special funding like this, it's tricky. It's not, it's not our local lodging tax money. And and we, we truly believe we did everything right with it. Um and um we did it exactly how we handled the cares money. We did it how we've handled money since nineteen eighty-nine. So we did not see an issue with it, but it's clear that, it's clear that there are concerns. It's clear that we need to clean up some of our paperwork. Um and um and this process has been, has been long and definitely a learning experience for everybody.
To a couple of board members anyways, and their position was that, yeah, and we should have amended the budget. And in the future, the budget should be amended rather than just spending the money and saying, hey, we said this was cool. And I basically, the discussion I had with them was, if that is the official position of the Winter Visitors Council. Where it said no payments, I don't really need to read that again, but no payments made unless the bodies approve it. They said, well, yeah, we should have applied for an amendment. I said, if, this is what I told them, that if that was the consensus of the Winter or Visitors Council. I could approve, I I could go along with everything and if not, I can all. Because I feel it was wrong and that would be on me if I approved it. Personally, I can't speak for anyone else.
And I I do understand your concerns.
Did you ever consider calling a special meeting? To discuss this meeting?
We, we did have a special meeting on January nineteenth and it was advertised and and all of that. And it was, it was voted on unanimously, um the the spending plan and then we revised the budget. We went through the whole process. Um and and truly believed we'd done everything correctly.
So you advised the budget, but never brought it to the other members of the.
We did not because we, we didn't know we needed to and um and we have never done that in the past.
Were you or were you not advised if you needed to?
We, I talked to our attorney and our attorney said this is special funding and it's three hundred thousand dollars. Um and and I explained how we done it. He said, did you amend the budget? Yes, we've amended the budget. So we talked to him. We also talked to Chris Brown, um who um basically wrote the um the lodging tax manual. And he is the executive director of the Wyoming Lodging and Restaurant Association. And he was also under the impression that we need more clarification in our joint powers agreement.
If I, I reviewed Chris Brown's meeting that was recently had and he he agreed that the local, local law. The local agreement, joint powers agreement rules. And this is different than, but the state in their wisdom, when they did this, they gave the local powers. The flexibility to draft the 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 governing. Rules of the organization that best suits that entity. And that's what was done, but.
And here's where we are now. We, we need to get our budget approved per the joint powers agreement between, I believe it's uh May twentieth. And the end of June and um and that dictates if we can spend any money with the new fiscal year, which starts next week. Um we have a lot, the TAD program um is something that really the towns of Dubois, Lander and Riverton contribute to. Um and that's why we, we give a set amount to both Hudson and Shoshone because there's not very, basically those towns get more money. Than they put into it. Um while the other communities, um it's divided, they get twenty-five percent. Um of our total revenue and and so we're at the position now where we've got money that people are. Ready to spend on TAD programs, on marketing. Um we've, we've had some holdups on some of the things we can do. Because there are state co-ops and the state is saying, do you want to sign up? And there's limited spaces for them. Um so we really are looking for this approval tonight um so that we can continue business. So that the communities can get their money. Um and we truly believe we have done everything correctly. And I think there's a lot of um reading and and just interpreting things differently. Um but we're at the position where where there's a lot of people waiting for this budget to get approved, including all of the TAD recipients in the, in the county. Um and I am happy to send around what I have here. We do try to be completely transparent. I think we've given everything that's been requested of us. I know that you all received my email, which was very, very long and very detailed. And I was hoping that would answer some questions, but we are also always available um to answer questions. I'm always in the office. Um Owen Sweeney works in the Lander Chamber and he is our incoming president. He's also available. Um you know, we want to work with the communities. We want to, we want to be a team. We, you know, and and mistakes will happen. I don't believe we made a mistake here and I, I go with what, you know, what we've done historically. Um the cares money, at the time Mayor Highsmith was the, was the treasurer. And and we worked through that and we didn't go through and get any approvals when we did that. So you know, it's, this feels very new to me. Um and. And I think it's been a learning experience for all of us, but we do want to work with you. We do want to have communication and have. Just be able to communicate with each other and ask questions.
Couple of things you brought up, I was treasurer. Uh I was treasurer, but I was, had not been in very good health and was not very active as that. I was removed from that position because I felt that brought up some issues I seen with, with, with that. And uh but uh. But like I said, uh I didn't voluntarily resign. I was removed from office because I brought up some of my concerns. When I was starting to get a little healthier, uh. Uh where I could, could address that, you know, and just because we did something wrong in the past, don't mean we did it right. And if we did something and I've done plenty things wrong, but if I don't have any, I don't have the knowledge that I'm doing it wrong. I just made a mistake. If I do something wrong and I know I'm doing it wrong, then I, I've committed a crime or I'm doing something wrong. That's, there's, there's a, there's a big difference. In in that and uh I I I think she's shown me, came uh council was just wanting to do things. The the right, the right way and kind of work, work through this. It would have been a. You know, could have been a lot simpler if we'd addressed this earlier and uh. But I, but I don't know, but that's. Kind of what I see here.
The motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve the Winter Visitors Council budget. Can I have a second?
Second.
Been second by Councilman Zant, been motioned by Councilwoman Hartkey. Further discussion?
I personally think you guys do a lot for the county, Shoshone, and I think you guys have the purist motives and intentions. But I also feel it was done wrong and I feel unintentionally with some bad advice. And I feel we need to get to the point where the no payment, unless it's in the budget. I don't see the point of approving a budget that can be changed by three hundred thousand dollars. I mean, there's just no point in passing that. But if the point could be reached where, you know, we should have shot out an email asking them to make a motion to amend the budget. So that the municipalities could have done that, fired back. That'd have been a no-brainer to me, but I feel it should have been done.
I understand and I think we, we, I'm hearing what you're saying and we should definitely open up the lines of communication more. Um because there is so much discussion around this topic, what we've done is invited somebody to answer lodging tax questions at our next board meeting. And all of you are invited. We can send Zoom links. We can do all of that and that way it's, you know, somebody to ask questions too. Um I I I believe we're doing a good job and it's good to hear that other people do as well. Um our lodging tax has gone up over thirty percent in the last two years, so we're seeing, we're seeing really good numbers. And we are seeing a busy summer already here and um and of course, um we are concerned. That there's questions about this um and and definitely want to address them.
When is your next meeting?
The meeting is the fourth Thursday in July, which I think is, is it somebody with a calendar? Yep, and it's at ten AM. It's actually in Shoshone. It's the Shoshone Senior Center. And I think our presenter is scheduled at ten fifteen, but I am happy to send um an agenda around with the, with the actual times. And he will be zooming in. He's in Cheyenne.
It's there, there again, you, we're bringing in same people that's been giving you bad advice and don't understand the local law. Don't understand our joint powers agreements, they, they don't understand what we have to do. Let me uh talk about a few state statutes and and our joint powers, you know. Yes, budget process, statewide budgets are required by the Wyoming State Statute sixteen dash twelve dash forty. For all government entities listed in WS sixteen twelve two oh two A unless otherwise specified. Joint Powers Boards are. The budget should be comprehensive, covering all proposed expenditures and all anticipated. Receipts and revenue regardless of sources, regardless of sources. That's important. Uh whether it's coming from what you're expecting or you're not, unanticipated revenue, what that three hundred thousand dollars was. Pretty simple. It's important to remain within budget as it states statute and therefore illegal to go over budget. Wyoming Statute sixteen dash twelve, four oh seven and Wyoming Constitutional Article sixteen dash seven. To go over budget, it's, it's illegal. Uh we, why don't you run over budget? Uh in order to prevent unauthorized and illegal spending. If an unforeseen increase in revenues or expenditures occur, it may become necessary to amend the budget. The budget must be amended if the entity intends to spend more than the total amount of expenditures approved within the budget. Wyoming Statute sixteen dash twelve, four oh eight, amending the budget must be approved prior to exceeding the budget. I tried to state, we hadn't broken any laws yet when we first, I found out about you'd spent twenty-seven hundred dollars illegally. Without approval, twenty-seven hundred was spent. We can amend the budget. No, we plow forward without taking that advice. We could have settled out there. We could have amended our budget, worked and, and went on, but we didn't do that. Joint Agreement sixteen dash one dash one oh five. Any two or more agencies may enter into agreements with each other for joint or cooperative actions pursuant to this act. No agreement here under nor amendment thereof is in effect until. The governing body of each participating agency has approved the agreement or the amendment. Uh, our board procedures, general. General program of the board shall be prepared, submitted and approved by the governing bodies at the same time in the same manner as the budget. As provided in paragraph nine below, paragraph nine, Wind River Visitors Council finances and budget plan. The board shall prepare and submit its proposed budget together with its proposed operating plan. To the governing bodies no later than May tenth of each year and shall obtain approval of all governing bodies. No later than June thirtieth of each year. That.
That's, that's where we're at right now.
That is what we are operating under.
Again, for the record, my name's Owen Sweeney, uh, current vice president, Wind River Visitors Council. So, thank you for that. If, as I've said before, if we're operating under mistaken advice. We'll take that into consideration, and I think, uh, Councilmember Stettler, what you said about the process for. Simply sending off an email and amending, we have a meeting, we amend the budget, we go to the joint powers via some kind of a communication. Um, so that we can get that done. I don't see any problem with that whatsoever. Um, but at the same time, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I asked you last week face to face. If you wanted us to go back and get reapproval from all the joint powers and you told me no. So I'm asking you right here and right now, what's the purpose of this? We, we're simply, we're, we're admitting, we may have made some mistakes. We're willing, we're willing to change the way how we do things so that all of the, the joint powers can be satisfied with what we're doing. So I'm just trying to understand what.
It's a good thing it's on YouTube. Actually, um, your executive director said we did, we did everything right.
We believe that we did.
So then, and now you're saying we did make mistakes.
I said, if, if we have done something. Incorrect, we will, we will find a way, what's the proper way? I understand there, there. This city council has concerns, member of the joint powers has concerns about how we've done things. The city council also seems to be dismissing. The advice that we've gotten from many other people, and so we're trying to, we're, we're in a position where we're trying to weigh. Information we're getting from all sides. And so if there's a way that we can, we can, those with concerns on both sides. The people who've been giving us information in one room or one virtual room together. To find a way to, to, to overcome these, these problems, we want to do that. We want to do that.
You've read the. You've read the joint powers?
I have, I understand what, what you're saying. I do.
You, uh, last. Earlier in the month, uh. There was a state land meeting and told it, we took. Some eight hours of training. Does your council have to take that training?
We have, we have heard, we have heard both sides. We have heard that from some people that. We have to, we've heard from other people that we don't. So we're still, we're waiting on guidance. On the kind of training that you're talking about, but I believe you're referring to the new law that was passed. One or two sessions ago about financial.
Yeah, my understanding that they will be required.
Oh, and if we're required, we certainly will, will do that. Absolutely.
Any further discussion?
Well, I'm just curious, so. I told you guys did everything right, and they set it up and you said, well, we may have made some mistakes. I honestly believe that any mistakes that were made at this point were probably honest mistakes. Personally, I feel they need to be acknowledged with a plan of not making them in the future. That, that's what I personally need. I didn't know if we were to that point or if you guys are still saying that there were no mistakes made.
I, I believe I just said a few moments ago that if, that if I've, well, what I'm saying is that if you would, if you are asking us. To amend the budget. In the future, in such a way that. We need to amend it, re-adopt it, and then send it out to the joint powers again, we, we'll do that, sure.
Yeah, that was the commitment I asked for, was that.
Do you, do you feel that you made a mistake?
Is that important? Yes.
Yes.
It's our money? It's not his money. It's Kelly's money.
No, no, no.
I'd like to just say we are trying to get as much information as we can, which is why we have somebody coming to our meeting in May. We're continuing to ask questions. The lodging tax manual is currently being revised again. And we are hoping that the person, the attorney who's working on that will help guide us through the process of revising joint.
That has nothing to do with what we're talking about now.
Well, I think.
Absolutely nothing to do with what we talking about now.
I'd like to just, um, just say that we. We believe, I believe we have done everything correctly. We are still exploring, we are listening, we are, we are open to. So finding out what we can do better to having more open communication. Um, and we do, I mean, we're educating ourselves. The joint powers agreement is from nineteen eighty-nine.
And still very binding.
It's still very binding and we believe we follow it.
I guess for my. What's the, I, I get, I get your guys' goal. I get your goal, I'm not sure what. Not sure what the, go ahead, if it's an apology, if it's a.
It's.
You don't want to do.
I feel a mistake was made and I want to make sure it doesn't occur. So if we. I feel it was done improperly, there's twenty-seven thousand dollars spent that should not have been, they were never amended. So we go ahead and pass everything, we just said, do it again.
So, so the concern is that it.
Going to continue. That's my only concern is that, it's like, well, that may have, that was.
We're, we're going to. We don't want to be in this conversation again of five dollars or five hundred thousand dollars, so.
Cause my argument is, uh, so we have to pass the budget or there is no budget, right? And I know everyone does, but Shoshone don't yield the peer pressure, we never have. But we have to pass this budget or there is no budget, but they can change it three hundred thousand dollars without us saying, yeah, that's okay. See, that doesn't, it don't get, with me, I.
Marshall, on this point of the twenty-seven thousand dollars, do you believe that Wind River Visitors Council followed the joint powers agreement?
They did not follow.
That's, that's all I need to know.
Now, I, what, I'm not going to argue for him, but I can understand where. They're getting their advice because state statutes differ from joint powers agreement, so we should understand. Okay, and that's where we're getting their advice from, since people quality have not in-depth read your joint powers.
And, and that happened with, uh, Brown that was, Chris had talked to, he didn't fully understand, but once he did, he agreed.
Yeah. Just if there's any. Confusion. On where this is coming from, that's where I, I listened to a couple of meetings and I read through the statutes, I just wanted to get it. There is a difference, so.
So from this group, it could go to. Um, I'm back to is the goal to slap hands and move on.
I don't even want to slap hands, I just want to make sure there's assurance it'll be done according to this in the future. That's personally, that's been.
You're, you're correct.
Yes, but, but we, along, just like you're.
If you say we did absolutely nothing wrong, that means nothing will change in the future that I believe was wrong. I'm not looking for a hand slap, I am looking for apology, I'm looking for a plan to follow.
We are, we are looking, we are seeking clarity as well. I understand what the city council is saying to us, but we also. Consulted our own attorney who is well-versed in municipal law. And he stated that we were doing things correctly. He, we, we looked at the advice we were getting from the state. And he said, yes, this is, this is.
Wind River Visitors Council Attorney put that in writing.
I don't know the answer to that.
Last I knew him, huh?
This was a phone call and I think he had a phone call with, with you several minutes before. Um, but we are, we really are doing everything we can and in answer to this, the special funds, this. Is probably unfortunately a one-time eighteen month. We had eighteen months, we have until the end of next June. If there's another defamation development chunk of money, it'll be July verse next year, which means it'll be in the regular budget. And we won't. So this is just, you know, this is a learning process for us. This is the first time this money has ever been issued for lodging tax boards. And I do understand the concerns and we are doing everything we can. I have spent. This is our busy time of year. The spring is when we plan for the summer. It's when my days start. I've got a meeting at seven in the morning, I've got a meeting at seven at night. And everything in between and. This has been really challenging this year and, and we, you know, we want to do the right thing. We want to plan for the summer. We want to move forward next week with, with our marketing campaign. And, and do good things for the community. Um, and I, you know, I don't really have much else to say. Um, I appreciate you having us here. I appreciate you listening. I appreciate the questions because they make us think and they make us look things up. Um, but we will continue to educate ourselves. The public is invited, you are invited. I can add whoever to my email list, um, and, and yeah, we're hoping we can move forward tonight.
Uh, what, I got a one more question that's Kip Post and, and Councilman. Stettler had a, had a discussion and, uh, agreed. I was pretty disappointed. I only seen one of the board members respond. To, to that, to that post. That Kip, Kip had put up and they had basically suggested something and I supported it. I said, that sounds like a good plan. Uh, to me, that was what needed to be done and, uh, no, not one other board member even responded to that. You know, I'm, I'm saying right now with what I'm hearing. Uh, that, uh, you still don't believe anything was done wrong at, uh, our. Our, our city attorney and I've talked, uh, Wind River Visitors Council Attorney months ago. And he, he told me at the same time, I don't know how the questions presented, I also didn't get it in writing from. But he did, did tell me that he felt that it needed to go through because of our joint powers at, agreement. It had to be approved by the, by the joint powers and that's what he told me. And, uh, but he's told you something different, but it's, uh, but our attorney, you heard right here in public. Says he can understand your dilemma, but that you didn't follow the joint powers that. So I'm going to say now, whatever's saying, and now I can't support approving this.
All for the question.
Question been called for. All in favor, uh, passing the Wind River Visitors Council budget, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Was. You voted aye? Motion passed, rated two. New business. Barnum changeover number one, thirteen thousand two seventy-one.
This is related to the, uh. Power changing from overhead to an underground service. For the, for the lift station.
Right, yeah.
This lift station is located on the corner.
Yeah, well, it's not quite on the corner, but close, it'd be on, yeah, off of, uh, uh, Seventh Street.
So closer to the fun. Is this the November project?
Yes, this won't take place until at least September. Um, until they get the lift station in.
I talked to the contractor about.
Waiting on parts.
They're a little late.
Yeah, so, yeah, they'll be done with this phase probably this week. And then, uh, we'll pick back up and when they get the rest of the components.
Holdups, parts, then.
What's that?
The holdup says materials.
Yeah.
He has special pipes and every tone is. Waiting to be manufactured, something to match up with our pipe or existing line too.
Yes.
I don't know enough, I don't know enough about it as far as, it wasn't a detailed conversation, but I know they're waiting on pipe and some engine parts.
Yeah, I talked, I spoke with engineer Brock, I didn't speak with Barnum directly, but that's what Brock related is.
He's a Nick, I don't remember what, he's superintendent of it.
Okay.
Something that came up, saying that when they were doing the, right up there on Maple. Seven.
Yeah, where that.
Yeah, that moves up, there's some little. There, I don't think that has anything to do with this change order.
No, not, yeah, that was.
I move we approve the change order, number one for Barnum.
Been moved by council, then we approve number one change order for Barnum for thirteen thousand two seventy-one. Can I have a second? Second by Councilwoman Harkey. Any further discussion? None being on paper, say aye. Aye, all the same. Passed all the material. Town and streets, name and adverbs. We have two Elm Streets presently.
We do.
Only one, only one nightmare though.
We're doing.
Out in that dual weavers, there's an elm out there also.
There's one that runs north and south.
Who done that?
You did. I, I, I circled them for.
I've named it Jake Street, I'm just saying, I went with Elm.
Oh, so it's platted.
It's platted.
It's curly. Yeah, so once that drops down into.
Down along the west, there's.
Very down.
Not actually a street yet, but it's planted.
Plated, you've got sewer lines coming through it.
That, is that next to Bo Weaver, is he on Cherry?
Yeah, he's.
He's up on Seventh.
Yeah, that's right. Between Cherry and Elm, I think.
Right.
Or his parcel.
Which one was Elm first?
The one that's on first.
But one does run east to west, one does north and south, so addressing could be confusing, but with the numbering system attainable, but. Two options are to extend either way in the helm, but that would require all existing owners to change all their addresses now. Or just change the helm up there for future to whatever.
A Chinese elm.
Elm and Chinese Elm.
I'd say we just rename the road.
That's what my hands are.
The north and south.
Yeah.
It seems the least, the path of least resistance.
Yeah, I think that'd be the easiest solution.
Well, that has to go to the county.
Uh, we do it, we do it, we do it and we tell the county what we did.
Yep.
Okay.
But we got to notify, notify them, we, we do it, but yes. And we'll tell them why. This is what we're doing.
And since there's no current addresses involved with that.
That's what, you might be forced, someone was to build or anything.
Yeah, right. It makes sense, east and west, uh, because that's the only east, west is a tree, everything else is something different. Uh, but that it, like, is pointing out that everybody that's on. Just point out that everybody that's on Elm now would have to change their addresses. So simplest thing is. Didn't we come up with something different for the the west side? Or call it West Elm.
That's gonna be confusing.
Yeah, they get them left, right, yeah.
I can say from a firefighter perspective, even dealing with the highway system here.
Yeah.
If you if come in as highway twenty or highway twenty twenty six, we have to go off mile. Post because that's really the only.
Right.
A hundred and less that way, a hundred and more that way.
Right.
But we get dispatch calls, same thing. We've flipped around because it's.
That's the main thing for this changes for emergency responders.
So was that a motion from you to make sure you lift this?
That's so hard to spell. I hate it.
Plenty of tree names out there.
There's Ash, Box Elder.
I grew up on Beecher. Kind of in the neighborhood with trees, Beecher and Popular and Ash. Those were my neighbors.
Cottonwood, we got cottonwoods.
Whatever we have to do.
Russian olive.
I'll make a motion to change the helm that runs north and south to Cottonwood.
Do you have Cottonwoods in the town?
Not yet.
Not be to this Cottonwood Bay and.
Didn't move and moved by Councilman Zant, second by Councilman Harkey that Elm be changed. The 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 west. Elm be changed, Stettler seconded.
Yeah.
Okay, Stettler seconded uh, to Cottonwood and. Any further discussion? None being all papers say aye. Aye. All the same. Motion to install. Reappointment for Winter Visitors Council Board.
And we nominate Mayor Highsmith to continue to fill that role.
Well, second.
Been moved by Councilman Steller, second by Councilman Harkey that uh. Mayor Highsmith re- remain as uh, whenever visitors count on the Wind River Visitors Council Board. Any discussion?
Yeah. Go ahead. Although there's headbutt and all. Won't take it for a moment. We don't respect what you can do. It's about procedure only. That's all.
That's for three year term?
Yes.
Just clarification.
Do lots do it.
Yeah, I'm pretty invested in it as you can tell.
It's a sign you don't want to be a part of.
Yeah.
Don't mind it not.
You'll have work to do.
Maybe you can get this. Joint power help get this joint powers clean clarification.
Discussion's already before May twentieth. Yeah, but.
Yeah.
The discussion's already taken place.
Finalized it.
Yep, yep, yep. Any further discussion? None being all papers say aye. Aye, aye, all is the same. Can pass to only affirmative. Job position and pay range. Let Chris take that or Kim.
Okay, uh, so in the budget, there was a seven point five percent pay raise. Um, across the board. Um, what that did though, obviously. We need to amend the. Job descriptions, um, easiest way would be to. Just universally increase the top end by your seven point five. I would suggest ten percent of the top ends. That way, ones that are capped out aren't at the very highest range where you don't have to do it again necessarily. If there's a different, you know, fifty cent raise that comes next year, you would have to keep changing it. Um, on the bottom end, I would suggest at least five percent just to keep up with the bottom end. But not the same rate as the top end. That's just, yeah, or we can go position by position all at the time.
Does that equate to in dollars and cents? Fifteen dollar an hour job.
Uh, ten percent would be a dollar fifty. But that's. What they're getting paid isn't set by the pay range. It's just what it falls within the pay range, the budget, but. Uh, for example, uh. Some of the positions we when we first did it. You know, they were. Already at the higher end, so seven point five and put them above that, so we need to increase. Top end on. Multitude of positions.
You don't have to pay the top, uh, what is the? What is the, what's our starting wage now?
Fifteen dollars an hour.
So would that increase by seven? Some percent then.
So. So. In the budget, there was a universally applied seven point five percent pay raise.
Inflation retention.
So this is not a pay raise. What we're doing here doesn't. This just gives, we set a pay range, so. If we said someone's pay above that pay range. Theoretically, we couldn't pay them that if the pay scale was not.
So in essence, if you, so if the job position currently is for labor fifteen to eighteen dollars. We can still start from the fifteen, but they said, well, they're like. Eighteen fifty disapproves the opportunity, say what fifty cents to put in the. That range.
Okay, for let me give a better example, so. For a police officer, the pay range currently is twenty to twenty six. With a seven point five, that would take it to twenty eight. We have one officer with twenty five years' experience that's making twenty six with the seven point five. He's gonna go twenty eight or twenty nine. Twenty seven ninety. So if we just universally increase the. Job description seven point five, he's goes from being capped out to capped out. So if you increase it ten percent. It would go to, you know, say. Twenty nine dollars an hour to the top end, but he's still only at what was set in the budget. Which would be seven point five, so he's not making twenty nine, just in six months of council, this is bringing everybody a fifty seven pay raises. You would have, there would be. Top end room that he can still receive that without having to amend. The job description.
This I merit based bonus.
That's separate from this.
That's it would not.
Yeah, that didn't affect the pain.
My motion, we. Universally raise the top end. Of our salary description ten percent.
Is that for all salaries?
Universally, every one of them up ten percent. As the, on the maximum side. On my. Saying. I know I know you had mentioned lower raising the lower side, but hey, if we still wanna hire somebody at fifteen, we can.
Right.
If I raise the top end ten percent universally, that covers. The inflation retention addition we've added to the salaries. Plus that little cushion as well. Is the reason I, did I explain the motion correctly?
Yeah, and this isn't an actual pay raise. This is just.
Yes, that's why I wanted to move that ten percent.
So back to the officers, is the office just going to affect? July one for the officer.
July one.
So it's. It's not a fair rate, but it's a.
We already gave them.
We're already gave a budget. It's in the budget.
But.
We're making the job description.
Is is lower than, yeah, so that's why I suggest doing ten percent, not seven point five, because then you're just trailing both.
But that's given a little flexibility on the upper end of the wage if needed.
And my motion is just to change the job description. That's it. If it gets a second.
I get a second. Been second by Councilman Harkey to to raise it the the. Every, on the job student, ten percent on every. University, university on every job. Job.
On the position, every position. On the upper end.
On the upper end. Any further discussion? None being all papers say aye. Aye, aye, both the same, motion passed only. Uh, what July fireworks? Oh, Fourth of July fireworks. What did you have in?
Well, Councilman Zant was already.
Yeah, what did you, what did you have in?
We never had an agenda, so put it on there. What, last year we let people what, on the Fourth of July?
Ground only last year because of the fire danger.
We're changing.
Year before. They were aerials well, so.
We had aerials last year anyway.
And yeah, and we had them anyway. Um. No fires though, but.
Okay, so.
Year before we had some fire.
Yes, we did, which is why we right made it, but this year. Um, I I think with the amount of moisture we have, I think we're.
So, I'd like to see fireworks allowed on Fourth of July. From, well, say. Eight in the morning till. Eleven o'clock. PM on the fourth.
Ooh, we're going all day.
I know little kids sometimes like firecrackers in the morning, you know, start off the day.
Wake everybody up on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, eight, cause last year I think we did till twelve oh five.
Twelve oh five, yeah, whatever, whatever.
But, I mean. Things will be.
You're talking about the time, I mean, that's.
You're saying from eight until when was your?
Eight to eleven. Kevin needs to go back by eleven.
Second.
Eight AM to eleven PM.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Zant, second by Councilman Steller that we. That fireworks approved on the Fourth of July from eight AM till eleven PM. Any further discussion?
Any restrictions on fireworks?
I I don't think we need any, I mean.
The areas of the big, so areas will be fine, ground, fire, whatever.
We did have some place last about people picking up. Debris in their yards from the aerials. So.
Yeah, people don't pick up their beer cans either, so.
They roll it really well.
I mean.
Any more discussion? None being all papers say aye. Aye, aye, both same. More passed on the affirmative.
July fourth open container.
July fourth open container. What did we do with that in the past?
I know in twenty anyways, we. Let them have open containers, but all other laws apply driving miners, all that crap. But if somebody wanted to walk up and down the street like fireworks with a bear, they could. And I don't recall there being any. Issues.
Uh, they'll say, hey, Bubba, watch.
Landered it, yeah, I think that was in there.
Four days been here.
Not this year.
I mean, the past uh, key, we're coming in and say, you know, liquor association would like to have these days for.
And the mortal.
The mortal, the fourth day, Labor Day, there's Eve. They haven't done that this year. So, uh. You know, I'm thank you for bringing it up, you know. So I don't know what you wanna do about it.
Well, I don't know, I thought. It seemed like in twenty, we just. Allowed open containers in the city limits for that day. But all other. Or motor vehicle operation and all that still applied. Like out on the sidewalk, but I didn't know if anybody wanted to go with that or. Nah, I just wanted the opportunity to talk about it. For us. And you can have a couple of beers and that's not a problem. It's a fourth of July.
So give me your times.
Well, I'm. Make a motion, we uh, allow open containers in the within city limits from. Noon until eleven when the fireworks cease. With a special note that. All motor vehicle and other laws. Are still in very much intact.
That would also include public intoxication and. You can drink what if you're.
Well, it's a question. I'd say you could have a beer and it's how many you could have, okay? I think that would be up to the officer's discretion.
Okay.
I mean, if you're behaving yourself, they ain't gonna bother you.
Correct.
I would, I would. It's been a lesson we learned slowly.
Just when you stumble on the highway and. You're in my car, we tend to take notice.
Yeah, but I mean. That that doesn't get permission to get fallen down drunk.
Okay, right. I just wanted to clarify that.
At least outside of your own yard.
Correct, right.
So it's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, both same, can pass, fully affirmative. Uh, could you get there, Councilman? Mister Mayor. You too, Chris. Uh. Well, you guys were talking about that. Sure that is on hold now or. For the duration of the summer. So Barnum construction will. Will continue on that. They're on this year. That that's due to some unforeseen circumstances. Water line isn't where it should be. Somebody moved it. I was able to get some summer help for Bart. To help with the. Cutting of the weeds and the. Lawns and the town property. They're getting pretty shaggy there. So we hired Mark Taylor. For the summer. He he seems to be doing a pretty good job. He's constantly cutting weeds. With all this precipitation we've had it. Making everything grow fast. So, we're trying to stay ahead of it. As for your mosquitoes, that's the same thing, it's a big problem. We're still. We're still spraying on Monday evenings and. Thursday evenings. We, Martin didn't spray last night due to the wind. It was pretty windy there, so. We didn't get to get out. He'll be out. Thursday again. Now with all this, with all this moisture and everything you have. There's a lot of puddles around that, you know, we can't see them. That's where the mosquitoes are, they're in their age. We can't hit every one of them. The mosquito ill. Go from larva stage to full grown mosquito in. Ten days of the, of the temperatures above eighty degrees. So, we do have a lot of mosquitoes this year. As for the water side, we've ever seen. I've been doing the sampling. That is required by EPA. And for this next coming month, I gotta. Do the disinfectant byproducts. And the lead and copper. That that is required. We have to do those in. In July, they were required to be done in July. Uh, so I'll be doing those once you're in the. Next week or so. After the fourth anyway. So. And I finished the uh. The annual CCR, the Consumer Competence Report. That is, I got it posted in my office there as well. And I had uh. Chris posted on the web. Our webpage.
Yeah, Facebook and the website. And as well as a copy, uh.
And then I've. It'll be posted and. There'll be a notice in the. Uh. Littleton Ranger. To, that'll tell you where you get the copy if you wanna see it. A lot of people don't really understand it though. They don't seem to bother to read it. I mean, it's a bunch of numbers. Then was that with the uh. When we get to uh, get to. Paper. That has that notice and I can. Send their certification into EPA. And we'll be in compliance with that. But I have until October first. But I like to get it done right away. And. On our whale project. I really don't have any update on it. Only that I know is. HDR and Gores have been talking. To try to see where they. You know, what, how they wanna work on it, work it. And I got a meeting with a. One of HDR's. Engineers, Marcus. On Thursday, Thursday morning, I'll be meeting him. He'll give me a little more update on. What's going on, how they're approaching everything. They don't, they don't wanna overlap what's what they're doing, Gores and HDR. And Gores is still doing the other, the other gentleman that was. First, he's, he's working with Gores. And the, as far as skate, I, I haven't talked to Dusty since. The first time that he. Started this. So I really don't have no. Details on. On our wastewater side. I I did the required sampling that is in the. Permit, the UIC permit number sixteen four oh seven. And that is, I do those uh. Those sampling. By annual. Don't have to do another sit here. After July, after July. Don't have to do another sit here after July, after July. I I haven't gotten back the report yet. On someone.
Are they still testing for COVID in their wastewater? At one time they did.
No, I haven't. I haven't heard. I I just, should I was wondering if they they did before me?
Yeah, I thought they did.
We had a uh, during the COVID time, we had some funding, uh so they reimbursed us for all the samples and uh. We sent it directly to the state lab for testing to see if it was in the grant, in the.
Yeah.
Uh, but that went away at the end of. Twenty twenty two, sorry, twenty twenty one, we stopped doing it um. Later December twenty twenty one.
Okay, I didn't know that. Okay.
At least the funding from the state went away and not that, I guess we could still do it if we needed to, but they would reimburse us.
I guess they got a variant going around that tests negative, but they're pretty certain that's what it is. I think the testing would be kind of a waste.
At this point, I mean, what?
Yeah, that's what I, you get a mask up again. I never did in the first place, so again, would not be the right word.
Well, the COVID pandemic still exists.
No, no, this was actually, I think it was Nebraska, that there's a ton of people sick, but. Everything says COVID, but their tests are coming out negative, so I think it's some variant that ain't. I was just saying that spending money on that testing may be a waste of.
I don't have any, any others to report on, is there any questions?
Nope. Thanks for good job you're doing, keeping everything going, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Oh, question.
What?
I didn't get a chance to talk, we had a lightning strike we had the other day, did we get the pump going again?
Uh, that, the the electrician hasn't showed up yet.
Okay.
I tested the well, the well pump, it's. It's okay, electrician's somewhere in the panel box.
Okay.
But in well number five, I'm I'm sure it's out. It has uh the electrician changed out the uh fuse on that one. And then as soon as he flipped it back on, it blew it again. So my thought is it's down hole. Okay, that well, the motor's probably.
Same thing that happened with well two, something similar, wasn't it?
Well, well, two is, it's not, I I tested that one, it's, it's still good, but it's, it was up on top.
Yeah, the last lighting.
Yeah, the transformer here.
Yeah. Yeah, we had to change out the pump on that one too after that. I believe that was.
Yeah, when it's knocked, there's breakers out above the transformers on that. Wiggly thing that we get wire up there.
Right, hopefully when we get the wellhouses and the lightning rods, it'll be a little bit safer.
And cheaper.
And cheaper, yeah.
That.
Thank you, sir.
My, thank you.
Uh. Executive session personnel, the next thing on our list. And I have a motion going executive session. We move by Councilman Parky, we go on executive session for personnel reasons only. Can I get a second, second by Councilman Stepper? Any further discussion? None being all in favor, say I. I. I both the same. Motion passed, time is.
Eight thirty five.
Eight thirty five.
And I have a motion to go back into regular session.
Been moved by Councilman Hart. You can have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilman, that we go back into regular session. Any further discussion? None being on favor say aye. Aye, same. Motion passed on affirmative. Dick, do you have anything to give to the council? And the public?
No, I think we've pretty much covered everything. The closest alligators in the canoe up and ended.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Hart, do you have anything you'd like to bring up?
Oh, I don't.
Councilman Demick, do you have anything?
Nothing here.
Nothing, Councilman Zandt. I would just. Like, because we had the rodeo. Royalty here, that was good. They were being here. I also. Did it 10 Hudson days in the afternoon or actually should be days and then go to the. Lander to the group, group fest. I told mayor that would also they asked me to attend those. Uh, I gotta say the lander. I never been to their pioneer museum before. That was really worth worth a visit. That was. That was real good. Uh. Recommend visiting that. Anybody that hadn't been there, pretty some pretty neat old buildings. Had a. Good conversation with. Couple Senator Barassos. Uh. Representatives, I don't have the names in front of me, but that was we talked about. Uh. Police department, uh, you know, rural. Being in rural Wyoming healthcare. And then law enforcement, first responders, uh. They, and we talked also about reading, you know, the statewide shooting facility. And, uh. Is that if they could. Be of any help with with any any of those issues being contacted. So for we're having having some issues with BLM. Or whatever, reach out to. But, uh. I do notice I want to thank the public. I see a lot of lot of weeds have been getting cut. And so the town we've been cutting ours also, but I've seen a lot of the public's been doing. Doing real well. I want to commend them for doing that. But, uh. Other than that, I really don't have anything else I think I need to talk about. So. Uh. You have anything you'd like to add, Jim, or do you?
No.
Dress, nothing. If nothing being gonna have a motion to adjourn. Been moved by Councilman Strattler to adjourn. Have a second. Second by Councilman Hartley. Any further discussion, none being on favor say aye. Aye, will same motion pass only affirmative. Boxway nine fifteen.